Good afternoon and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's Cablecast Post Agenda on Quality of Life Ticketing for Tuesday, October 1st, 2024. Will the Clerk please read the title of the bill?
Bill 622, ordinance supplementing the Pittsburgh Code Title VI Conduct Article I Regulated Rights and Actions by adding Chapter 619A entitled Quality of Life Violations.
For the record, we are joined today by Councilmembers, Councilperson Strasburger and Councilwoman Warwick, and other members may be joining us periodically. So I think it would be best if we do introductions around the table from the Public Works team, and then we'll get talking here.
Absolutely. Chris Hornstein, I'm the Director of Public Works.
Eric Kintakis, Inspection Supervisor.
Bill Crane, Deputy Director of Public Works.
Sean Wagel, Superintendent Environmental Services.
Anna Bagwell, Environmental Enforcement Coordinator.
Marcel Lumine, Assistant Director.
Thank you so much for joining us, joining us here today. We're going to talk about quality of life ticketing. I think it is a, becoming a more pressing issue for me after spending the weekend at the Garbage Olympics and seeing that all three award winners were from my district, which is, you know, something we're proud of, but also not that proud of. It's kind of a good and bad distinction. But, you know, I also want to acknowledge all the work that the Public Works, Public Works team had to do to clean up and make that day possible, and thank you all for that. But quality of life ticketing has been something we've been thinking about in the Third Council District for a while now, and you know, I know that it was something thought about well before, well before I came on board. So we introduced this legislation earlier this year, and we've been working on it, you know, with, with your help, with your guidance all throughout the year. And we really want to make sure that we have the strongest and most useful tool here to help clean up some of our trash issues. We know that the private enforcement is a portion of what we need to do to, to clean up the city. It's not the only thing, but it is something that we want to start with here, and something that I think we've got support for. And want to also acknowledge that in the preliminary budget that was released yesterday, one of the things that's highlighted is an addition of anti-litter inspectors to supplement the crew, which is, is really the thing that we, we knew we were going to need to make this possible. And want to thank the Director and everyone else for making sure that that request was recognized and advocated for in the budget here. So we really do appreciate that. So we'll go through quickly. I think I gave an agenda to everyone at the table here. We'll go through the agenda, and then we'll have time for members to ask questions, hopefully getting members' feedback and how we can make this the strongest bill as it comes up. I'm going to check with the Clerk's office. You said October 17th?
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth, before it comes back up again. So we will have some amendments for it there. So everyone should have the list of, or the, the current legislation as it stands right now. This is something that I want to also acknowledge Alicia Carberry in my office worked diligently on for pretty much the entire year here. And if I can give a quick explanation of what we're talking about here, so the, and I know we'll talk about the, the current process, but what we're looking to do here is to not actually change any legislation, or by legislation, not change any violations. The violations are all the same. The violations that have been on the books are the violations that we're looking at here. But we will be looking at changing the enforcement mechanism for how we enforce, enforce the trash violations that we have, or as we could say, probably not enforcing them. One of the other things I, I want to acknowledge, the Controller's Office has helped us out, and they're in the middle of an audit right now on our enforcement mechanisms and how they're working or how they're not working. And the report is not all back, but they've given us some of the data that will come out, and it, 75% of our trash violations take between one and three months to be resolved. And that means that neighbors are, are sitting with trash violations next to them for, you know, for an entire summer, if, if that's, that's the case there. So really is something that we need to, need to work on here. And, you know, I think we've got the right mechanism in place. Want to also acknowledge that we have received a lot of positive feedback on this legislation. This is something that we've been compiling letters of support from in our neighborhoods, and we've talked about it in community meetings. It's something that everybody is excited to see. We are compiling a PowerPoint on our website of some of the trashiest pictures of the city, and it's, it's pretty jarring. It's not something that we want to, want to show people. Last thing I want to acknowledge in the introduction here, we are taking feedback from other people that may have had some issues with our legislation and making sure that's incorporated, and we'll get to that kind of in the, the end of this, this program here. So if we can, can I, Eric, if you, you wouldn't mind kind of walking us through what our current system is for enforcing trash regulations?
Certainly. So we, we basically, we didn't reinvent the wheel. We kind of brought the wheel over from PLI, so, or DOMI operates the same way. We'll receive a 3-1-1 complaint. We go investigate it, and either violation found or violation not found. At that point, you know, we document it, take pictures, cite the violation within our software, Computronics, the letters generated, sent to the parcel owner with a timeframe to return. Typically, that timeframe for most refuse violations, we set it 10 days. We had originally done, done a more aggressive schedule, but we were limited with inspectors, so we went with a 10-day go-back. And we've been operating, again, following their lead with the three strikes you're out. So first request for compliance, second request for compliance, the third time we're out there, we issue a criminal complaint. At that point, it's sent to the magistrate, as well as the parcel owner, and the magistrate schedules it for a court hearing. They summons the parcel owner to court. You know, we, I agree with you that we, it is a long lag time, and what we sort of see is when does the parcel owner kind of wake up, and what jars them to fix the situation? A lot of times it is that either criminal complaints issued, or when they receive a summons from the magistrate. So that's kind of the present state. I don't know if you want me to get too into, we presently have, because we're, we're new, you know, we started this program from the ground up, so we-
When did this program start?
So I, I came over, there was a system in place where the foreman would write some of these violations, but, but actually what I consider like real code enforcement, again, with the PLI model, began June of 2023.
Okay.
We have three inspectors. We kind of parsed the city into three areas, and, you know, it's, and we're very reactionary. We, we can't, one of the beauties, one of the things that PLI has going for them is they have a lot of inspectors. An inspector will have one magisterial district. So you have a few wards that you can really get in there, and you can be proactive and do what I call pickups. You can sort of self-write if you see violations. We're so inundated right now with 3-1-1 calls that, you know, we're just, we're doing the best we can.
Do you have any numbers of, and it's okay if you don't-
I do.
Of, of how many 3-1-1 calls you're receiving?
Yeah, so I, I pulled everything. It was interesting because there is some disparity, but I, so 3-1-1, so complaints from Q Alert as they pertain to refuse and trash violations came in. So I did a year from September 2023 to the end of September, and we're right around 8,000 complaints from Q Alert. Now, in CX, we, we've somehow have 8,400 complaints. And this happens because things will be categorized wrong. They come in as a weeds and debris. PLI gets them, throws them to us. So there's a little disparity there. Of those complaints, we generated about 9,000 case files. Now, of those 9,000 case files, we tip, we, we came right in around 15,000 inspections. So it's almost, you know, at least two per, and then I, you know, I ran the math on no violations found at about 40%, violations found at about 60%. Resolved or withdrawn is about 80%. And so I, have we issued criminal complaints at about 13%? But again, once they start that process, a lot of people have their, you know, oh, no moment, and we'll, we'll go take care of it.
So with three inspectors, we're inspecting 15, doing 15,000 inspections. And that's not to mention all the court time that, you know, I've sat in the court-
Yeah, that brings-
It doesn't happen quickly.
Yeah, that brings up a great point. You know, I can't say enough great things about the three folks we have. Just to put in perspective, you know, one inspector has seven wards, one has nine wards. Cullen Connect has 16 wards, albeit a lot of them are very quiet. But they also have three magistrates apiece, three magistrates apiece, and Cullen actually has seven magistrates. They'll schedule their court on a day. Not only has, you know, she's been double booked before, but also that's a, that's a day down in court. So, you know, there's stuff there also, because you're down a day of inspections. I try to get, and if you say a couple hours of admin time, these folks are using their own cars, so they're doing their mileage, they're returning phone calls, they're returning emails. If you have, you know, six hours to do pure inspections, how many can do an hour? So we try and keep it around 25, you know, 25 benchmark, 20, 25, 30 a day.
20, 25 inspections a day?
Yeah, is, is what I'm, you know, the benchmark we shoot for. But again, being down with court, driving all over the place, driving all over Pittsburgh, it's, it's hard to meet that.
So can you talk a little about how you're able to be proactive in inspections?
So at this, at this point, and especially with Q Alert and how it's set up, and, you know, I know with this new system, and, you know, we have SLAs, we have timeframes we were supposed to try and hit. We don't have time to, again, do what I consider pickups or self-writes, see it, write it. We're just responding to constituents' complaints, and that's the majority of our day. I mean, have my folks done self, yes, absolutely, we've done pickups, but, you know, the, the brunt of their day is just scrambling.
Fuel and progress way.
Yeah.
Yeah. And so I know that one of the things that we, we looked at in the gold plan was looking at where trash is versus where we're getting 3-1-1 complaints from. Do you have anything to, to talk about the discrepancy between?
Well, I think that's a very true statement. I know when I was at PLI, I had the Hill District. It's a very quiet area. And then we have other areas like the South Side that are very, you know, what I consider loud by the constituents, and people putting a lot of complaints, or, you know, Squirrel Hill putting a lot of complaints. If you look at your data, you'd say, oh, Squirrel Hill's a mess. You know, I can assure you that there's disparity there. Again, with more inspectors would allow the, would allow the inspectors to get into these wards and really be proactive and really make a difference. Because you get to know it, you know. I, as a PLI inspector, I had wards one, two, three, and five. You know, I knew them like the back of my hand. I wrote a lot of, lot of violations just because I was there, you know. I was, you know, I would get through all my 3-1-1 calls, and then it's, it's time for me to kind of try and help the neighborhood.
And one of the other things that I have, I've learned and kind of been disappointed or discouraged by, and I know that your folks are discouraged as well, when a case has three violations, gets scheduled for court, goes in front of a judge, and the day before they actually have their case, someone actually takes the time to, to clean up their property. So at this point, you know, this could be months out from the initial violation, and they clean up their property, and the judge dismisses the case.
Yes, and it was also sort of our, our model that, you know, we want abatement. And so is it taken care of? So the day prior to court, you know, we'll run out there and document, and if it's taken care of, it was taken care of. You know, a lot of times we would withdraw it and/or the magistrate would say, you know, why are we here? They took care of this.
Sure.
But-
The previous Judge Ricardi, not, not the, the new Judge Ricardi, would, had started towards the end of his, his time on the bench, charging, at least charging folks that were in, in that situation with court costs. So not levying larger fine, but, you know, essentially making sure that there was some acknowledgement of, of what happened.
Again, it's one of our, it's one of the challenges with not having a lot of people is I can't afford to have you in court if they took care of this.
Sure.
We withdraw it because you took care of it. Again, I think with more inspectors, if, if that's the position we want to take, we could certainly say, it took you a month to take care of this. Why are we here? And we could take everyone to, we could stick with it and take everyone to court, need be.
Yeah.
There's, there's also, it's worth mentioning, there's also, you know, disparity amongst the magistrates. Some appear to, you know, to withdraw things. Some go real hard. You know, I have some people on the West, have a magistrate on the West End that'll, it's $500, 500 bucks, 500 bucks. We've had some enormous fines, 25 grand, you know, we've had some big stuff, too. It's some of the, some of the things I like about the quality of life ticketing is a very consistent approach. I think it's a manageable amount, and there's equity there, you know, so it sort of takes that out of the equation.
All right, then let's get into talking about quality of life ticketing. So we've talked a little bit about how the process works. Unless, does anyone else have anything they want to add? I'm trying to be a little free-form with this. Okay.
For me or them?
Well, I mean, we, we could do that, and I should acknowledge, we've been enjoyed, joined by Councilman Mosley and Councilman Wilson.
I just want to say I apologize for not being on time, too. And I like everyone here. I appreciate everything they do.
You're, you're looking at me like you want me to give you forgiveness or something.
I just didn't know the run of, I just didn't know the run of show here, and I just, you know.
Okay.
Awkwardly came in, just wanted to say how much I appreciate what I've done.
I, I forgive you, but you'll have to ask the Director for his forgiveness, so. So I want to move into talking about, about quality of life ticketing and, and what our plan is here. So we have looked at the code, and we have identified four violations that already exist in, in code. So to be very clear, these already exist in the code. The difference is the way that we will enforce them, and they're accumulation of garbage, improper storage of cans, early set-out or late removal of cans, and then contamination of recyclables. For those that have been following along at home, at one point, we did talk about adding weeds, weeds to this, and we are not doing that in the initial run of quality of life, just that weeds are much more complicated than, as we learn more, we learned that, that's a, it's a whole nother discussion. So the plan here is that, similar to a parking ticket, we would give someone a ticket for a violation on the spot. And we would follow a nail-and-mail approach, which means that we would both be giving the onsite giving a ticket, as well as mailing the property owner to make sure that they were aware of, aware of this violation. So my office, as well as, I know Councilperson Strasburger's office, have been working really hard on trying to figure out what needs to be on the ticket, and how to design the ticket, and also, you know, what technology and what capacity we'll, we'll need to make these tickets happen. We know that we want to include on the ticket, a way to contact 3-1-1 for supplies to remedy the situation yourself, information on the appeals process, a picture of the violation, instructions for getting a translation, and a clear description of how to resolve the issue so that you're no longer out of compliance. We want to make sure that the owner of record is responsible for the fine. The only situation where the property owner would not be responsible for the fine would be someone that has filled out the landlord addendum that all of the leases within the city of Pittsburgh should include. And we also want to make sure that that addendum is in the tenant's native language. I think that's one of the adjustments that we've learned about that would be really important, important. And we also want to make sure that we explain how the, how to make the payment and what the appeals process could be on the ticket as well. So that is the, the view that we have on the quality of life ticketing. But I'm curious, you know, if anyone could speak to, and Eric, I think you're, you're probably the, the expert here on-
Yeah, I'm sorry if I missed this with Alicia. I think not having tight-fitting lid is something we see a lot, and actually, the damage that that does, I, you know, I understand the improper storage of cans out of public view, but also the, you know, watertight can with a tight-fitting lid, that, that causes a lot of damage. Not, not having that and being outside, so that might be a natural up there.
Yeah.
And if I miss that in discussions with Alicia, I apologize. As, as for the, so if I'm hearing you correctly, and what we do right now in Computronics is, again, we do cite the parcel owner, which it pulls information from Allegheny County Assessment. So just for my edification, if the owner, the parcel owner then comes and says, I have this, would we then, we dismiss that and then write the tenant? Is that correct? Is that as I'm, how I'm-
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
So can you talk about how the, the change in violation, or the, the change in process here would help you, be able to help your team?
Yeah, I, oh, I, as I sort of stated before, I, I like a lot about it as far as the consistency of approach and sort of keeping this out of Magisterial Court for the most part, unless, unless it enters into the appeal process.
So my, my whole view here has been that this would allow you to get through that 15,000 inspections a lot faster. And, and actually, as you were describing, a lot of those inspections are follow-ups.
Yeah, I think, I think the process would be the same as I understand this, with the first violation being 35, second with a, with a ramp up. We still have to go back out there. And as I started to think this through, you know, we have the software, so we would definitely utilize Computronics. As I see it, you know, we, we have some sort of handheld that we leave there, but then that has to communicate, and then we still have to send a letter out on some sort of inspection schedule to go back. So in a way, I think this is, you know, it's real similar to what we're doing now, except we're, we're not heading off to Magisterial Court.
So my, you know, my biggest question here is that, do you think this will help us clean up the city?
Yes.
Perfect.
I think, yeah, there's, there's work to be done. I think more than anything, what's going to help is the additional inspectors, personally. It's just going to give, you know, again, it's going to let you get in there and sort of saturate the wards and, and really sort of help the neighborhood.
All right. Well, I think what I would like to do now is, is move on to members, if that's okay. And we can kind of ask questions and proceed through this, if that's all right. I know that Councilperson Warwick, is she still on, is pressed for time? If it's okay if she goes first?
Yeah, that's her one.
Oh, really?
She, she should go first, and then-
All right.
Yeah.
Whoever wants to go.
Please have her go first.
Yeah. Councilwoman Warwick, can you join us?
Oh, yeah. Oh, sorry. I didn't know someone else was going to go. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yeah, okay, great. Yeah, thanks. Sorry, I'm, I'm in between, I know, on the move at the moment. Yeah, so I, I did want to ask, I know that we've talked about this before, just about the process in terms of, you know, proactive versus reactive. I, you know, there were definitely concerns raised by a few groups about sort of, you know, retaliatory 3-1-1s, people calling on their neighbors, excuse me. And I'm very supportive of this overall concept, but one thing for me that seems important is the proactive side of it, right? So I guess, so just quick, so was my understanding that we will, or, you know, hopefully, depending on the budget, we will have an inspector for each district? Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct, Councilwoman. There will be a total of eight new inspectors within the budget, so that will raise our total to 12. So yes, we will probably align them with wards and magisterial districts, but that is, that is an accurate statement.
Okay, so, so that's, I mean, I'm just sort of thinking about my own district, and it's funny, someone, someone mentioned lots of 3-1-1s coming from Squirrel Hill, for example, where, you know, and, and, you know, and to have, to have, you know, inspectors responding to those 3-1-1s, but not actually going through, for example, Greater Hazelwood, the 31st Ward, you know, communities where we're seeing these types of, and to be honest, not, not just trash issues with regards to trash gift, but just overall, you know, litter issues on properties. I, I mean, I, I would definitely want to know for sure that, that when we roll this out, that it will be a proactive process, like, so whether that is an inspector kind of going around after trash day, checking, you know, or just going around, sort of driving around the streets, but not necessarily answering 3-1-1s, and that that is also clear to the public, that, you know, maybe we'll take a 3-1-1 as a, you know, for, for the record. But, but I, I definitely don't like the idea, for example, of the inspectors having like an SLA on 3-1-1s or, or anything like that, so that the process really would need to be expanded to the 3-1-1 team.
Yes, I, Councilwoman, I completely agree with you. You know, right now, I think, as Eric mentioned, we have to be reactive to the 3-1-1 complaint system, just due to the staffing level. So additional staff allows us to take a proactive approach. You know, we can add the 3-1-1 complaint to a case file as a reference. It's not necessarily what I would say driving our work. That, that, would you agree with that, Eric?
I would, in fact. To further this a little bit, you know, some of the violations, early set-out, late set-out, we, we can hardly ever get to them, you know, because by the time they come from Q Alert and do a handshake into Computronics, it's the day after, it may be done. My vision and what I've sort of, you know, and I spoke this through with our, our inspectors, again, if, once you, once you know your magisterial district, and you know your wards, you know what their trash pickups are, you could certainly, the day before, you know, day before, kind of cruise around and see day after. Again, I, I think more inspectors is going to really allow you to sort of saturate the ward to kind of help the communities.
Okay, great. And then one last question I have is, it's a little bit off-topic, but I, I think it is a question that- but I, I think it is a question that, um, folks in the public may, may have. Um, and maybe, um, maybe Sean, you can answer this. Is, you know, we do get situations where, where, you know, it's garbage day, um, you know, the trucks come around, the garbage is collected, but, um, oftentimes there, there is garbage left on this, you know, on the street, on the sidewalk, in around the cans. Is that, is there, I mean, and I don't know if it's, if it's staffing issues or what, but could, could we get a, a sort of a better understanding about why, uh, the crews that are picking up the garbage are not also able to kind of do like a quick sweep up around the area where the garbage was, you know, if it blew out or, or whatnot?
Well, certainly for the, the most part, our crews are doing that. Uh, but again, we're there to collect the trash, not clean people's properties. Um, I, I'm a city resident myself. I'm responsible for my property. If, if the raccoons or something got into my property, I'm running right up before the, the trucks get there myself to clean up. Uh, but certainly oftentimes there's, there's many different reasons why things get left. Um, sometimes they exceed the number of bulk items. Sometimes they were out late. Sometimes there are items we just simply don't collect. So we investigate each and every, uh, call that we get.
Okay. No, I guess I wasn't really asking so much about items that get left. I do understand that, but I mean, I, you know, I, I see it myself in my own neighborhood. Um, sometimes there are, you know, and, and you get in particularly dense areas like, like Oakland, for example, you know, there just will be sort of litter scattered around the cans, you know, that has fallen out of the cans or whatnot. Um, and, and I understand, and so, you know, maybe like in the act of, of tossing the, the garbage into the truck, um, is that part of, is that not part of the crew's, um, sort of role is to make sure, or is it really, is that the job? I mean, it's just that when it goes into the street, for example, it sort of becomes no one's garbage anymore. You know what I mean? Now it's in the street or, or whatnot.
Yes, certainly.
Or along the sidewalk or, or wherever where it's sort of like, oh, well, this now is, is just, you know, nobody's property necessarily, but it's like, you know, scattered along the route on garbage day.
Certainly. If, if we make the mess, we should 100% be cleaning it up. Um, if the mess is there before we get there, that, that's an enforcement action at that point, that they're not properly storing and setting out their trash.
Okay. So then I guess that's a question then in terms of the process. So then would, in those cases, then would, would your crews be engaged? I, and maybe this isn't worked out yet, but again, this, you know, this is, this is kind of what I mean, like my concern is about like the process being locked in before, you know, so is, is that something that we're thinking about of having, having your crews engaged in, you know, here I am, here's this house, you know, whatever student house in Oakland with just a bunch of trash bags and ones ripped up and there's just a bunch of garbage all around the garbage cans. Uh, so if the crew wouldn't clean that up, would they then have a role in making sure that that violation or, you know, that that ticket was, was issued?
I think that's an excellent tool for this, um, that, that now right there on the spot, they're able to call the foreman. The foreman can come over, um, and, and do that quality of life ticketing right there. That, that's really what we're lacking in the process. You know, we, we get there, we have to send a letter to warn the property owner. We try to leave things on the door. Um, it's weak sometimes before the, it gets abated. So I think this would be a perfect example of where this new ticketing would come in handy.
Okay, great. I think, I think that's all my questions. I appreciate. Thanks, everyone.
I don't know if this is proper. I, Councilwoman Wilson, if you don't mind me asking, I, I'm curious, do we envision that the foreman will be writing tickets in those situations? Are we going to give the foreman and the anti-litter inspectors both the ability to do that?
I don't think we've fully vetted that yet, but.
It sounds like a good idea to me that we should really, that both should have the, the capacity to do that. And that's, uh, an adjustment that we can make as we're, we're talking through this. There any objections to that? Anything I'm not thinking through?
No, I think that would be a great tool. Um, you know, our foremen are, in a lot of cases, the first line of communications between environmental services and the resident when there is an issue that we certainly try to work through, whether it be an oversized can or some of the other issues that we deal with. Um, so it would be an effective tool for them. I know in speaking with them myself, you know, they often get just as frustrated as residents, um, at, you know, some of the unsightly conditions that they encounter from there. So, so enabling them with that tool would be very helpful. I think on the flip side of that is, you know, coming at things with a measure of compassion and discretion to understand what an individual citizen is, um, may or may not be going through, um, in any particular situation. Um, certainly they're out in the same neighborhoods every single day, so they're very familiar. Um, you know, they would be the first people to probably notice when something is out of place. Um, and I, I certainly think we can work through a process that empowers both our foreman and our inspectors to issue quality life ticketing.
Yeah, it would require some tweaks in CX. Uh, a knee jerk concern is when these letters go out, you know, there's the inspector's email, there's the inspector's phone number on there. So this, I guess this would have the foreman's contact information, you know, they're, they're out in the field. I like the thought of having this done with, uh, anti-litter inspectors, but again, I'm, you know, I'm just a part of the machine. So I'm, I'm happy to entertain anything. I just, I see some things that give me a little bit of, uh.
Sure. Yeah, makes sense. Um, and I, you know, I just, I do want to acknowledge the amount of work that the anti-litter inspectors already have to do. Um, and you're, you know, with such a little team, um, you, you're able to do that many inspections. This might be able to give them, you know, even more of a little, little hands up there. So.
Oh, I like the help. Yeah. I mean, I appreciate the help. I think, you know, I think it's doable. I just think there's, um, some things that need to be worked through.
Definitely a process to be worked on. But that, that could maybe be more of the proactive side of this tool.
Great. Uh, Councilman Wilson?
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Councilman. And thanks for having us. Thanks for everyone who is here, is here. Um, had an earlier outburst when I said I appreciate everyone here or that I like you. I, I just want to make the point that it's more so that we worked together on a lot of different things. So I could probably go down the table here. So I appreciate everything you all do, especially those, uh, those ball field fences are almost done.
That's right.
Look good.
They do look good.
And, uh, thanks for talking about, um, ticketing. I worry about some of our property sometimes. So I appreciate you tackling some of those ones.
Some of our properties.
Yeah. Appreciate that.
Sure.
Yeah, I'll just try to learn a little more by asking some of the questions, but there was something recently said and I didn't have a chance to go through, um, the entire budget yet that was proposed, but someone here said anti-litter inspector? Is that something that's shown up in the budget?
Yes, it's in the budget.
What is that?
It is an inspector whose sole focus is on anti-litter enforcement.
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand like what, what would they do during the day?
It's code enforcement. Again, uh, the, the majority of what they're presently doing is responding to 311 complaints. So just as PLI.
Like 311 complaints that relate to?
Refuse and refuse recycling violation, right? Refuse illegal dumping dumpster.
So it'd be.
So it's in the municipal code 619.
It'd be separating what jobs inspectors would do. So one would just do a certain type?
Correct. Yes. So their, their code enforcement would be on those elements of code that would be directly related to reducing the litter. Um, so some of that's illegal dumping. A lot of it would be this, uh, quality life ticketing. Um, there's a couple other classes of, of violation that we would probably ask them to enforce as well. Um, you know, Sean, jump in here and help me understand. There's also, um, we would utilize them for, um, some of our recycling enforcement.
Certainly anything trash, um, recycling related.
Non, non-separation of recycling, uh, recycling in blue bags.
Storage.
Early set out, late set out, cans improperly stored, accumulation of garbage on your parcel. Trying to think.
Yeah. A side note there, man. I love, uh, the fact that we pick up everything, mostly everything. You got to, um, I mean, just imagine how worse the problem would be if we didn't, uh, like, you know, some other municipalities, like all, all the municipalities around us, you know, there's like a limit what you can put out. So we really take on a lot. We do. We really take on a lot in general, like literally anything you put in a bag, you know, all those criteria for it. But like, if you're creating X mile trash, like they're going to pick it all up.
Yes. Yeah. Our people, our crews, um, the service I think is just second to none. Um, you know, I also note too, having moved into the city from our municipality, um, they're all on a two week schedule, um, for recycling and or, and just solid waste. So, um, you know, we collect more often. Um, we correct in a greater volume. Um, so we do need tools that help us, um, reduce the amount of litter for, um, all residents. Um, those litters go into our riverways. Um, you know, they just create trash and, um, a poor environmental condition, um, for folks. So.
I got a, I got a, um, matches the other day from a friend, someone I grew up with. They live in Philadelphia. They came here to visit their mom and they, they like took a stroll around Ruby Park and they, uh, sent me a message saying, wow, there's no litter in this park. And I was like, that's great. Like they were just so, you know, cause they, they're from that area and everything. And they were just like so pumped about it. So thank you for everyone who's doing something about that. I know that played a big part in it.
You know, a lot of our violations are behavioral. Um, unlike a PLI or a domie where, you know, the spend's big. If your roof's falling on someone's head or, you know, if you have to repair your home, that's a big, big expense. We live in the space of this is easy stuff to fix, like store your cans properly, you know, at, at most you might need to get a lid or a new can, but you know, a lot of this stuff is, it's easy to fix. It's behavioral.
Yeah. Well, I was just trying to make the point like that, the, you know, in terms of litter in the park, like that was something that someone lives in Philadelphia, come here, you know, it's nothing better than someone lives in Philadelphia coming here and saying, wow, like at least this part of the city like looks fantastic. So I just wanted to thank you all for doing that in this litter conversation. Um, so I was hearing some of the things you said about like you get more complaints from Squirrel Hill versus, you know, another part of the city. And so like, what are some of the complaints that you get in Squirrel Hill?
They're the same across the boards. I mean, they're, they're, they're any sort of violation of the municipal code.
I'm just like, for instance, like what, like what's a typical complaint?
Just across the boards, early set out, late set out, um, cans not stored properly, cans overflowing with trash. You know, South Side has a lot of that, of just, uh, trash cans with stuff just spilling out of it, no lids on the cans. Um, you know, I think they're the same across the boards. However, again, like the hill is notably quiet, like, um.
What about the North Side? Do you get a lot?
The North Side's quiet.
You get a lot. Yeah, it's pretty quiet. You know, what's an issue, uh, for us? And I know that we've probably talked about it quite some bit is that, is that we have vacant property. Um, I know we have, we have properties, we have properties, whether someone's, um, yeah, I'm not sure what's going on, but there's a lot of stuff on the property. And I want to mention the street, but I feel like, you know, I'd really be honing in it, like I'd be really be singling one, you know, feel like someone could be watching us be like, oh, they're talking about the, uh, this property. So, you know, but there's several of them where there are abandoned cars, they're working on the cars, or car parts in the, on the property, they're using another vacant piece of property that you can't to contact the owner. We have trouble like ticketing them or enforcement. So like what's going to happen in those scenarios where there literally is like, you know, like, like we said, North Side's quiet. I mean, it's not completely quiet, obviously, but like I might have different issues than, than you have on the South Side, um, like you were describing, but, or maybe they exist, but just people aren't, they're not activated to, to put a complaint in about it.
There, there's other agencies involved.
But the, but the complaints that I'm seeing and when I'm, when people are driving around the neighborhood, it's certain problem, properties that are, you know, a big, a big nuisance to the neighborhood. And I'm just really wondering how we crack down on that because I mean, it still is happening.
I think what you're.
I'm not saying that you are at fault, but it's like a probably a problem.
I think what you're describing though, um, falls squarely into PLI's sort of jurisdiction. And at a higher level, at the director level, we, we discussed, um, PLI can write weeds and debris. And so they had been writing accumulation of trash if it's just on your parcel. Let's, let's say you have a house that has auto parts and just stuff all strewn throughout. That's PLI today. Um, we are focusing strictly on refuse, you know, at the curb refuse garbage. That, that's where we live, uh, chapter 619. So there, there is some differentiation there that needs to, to be talked about. Um, I agree. There's some stuff coming down the pike that I'm really actually very excited about that I think is going to help tremendously is that, uh, rental registration, you know, and it is one of the things that we struggle with is getting a hold of these LLCs, getting a hold of these absentee owners, getting a hold of these people that don't live in Pittsburgh that have, um, renters in there. It's, it's an issue. Um, I see it in our program and PLI certainly sees it. And I'm, I'm hoping that, uh, that rental registration and actually having contacts is going to help with a lot of the stuff. I think we're at a good congruent of all these things happening. That's going to actually, we can make a big difference.
Is there any going to be, is there like any effort to be proactive on like cleaning the business district or like, is there any way if there's, you know, there's ticketing going on, like there's some way we can, is there any exploration, like putting the funds back into like clean business districts or doing something? Just didn't know if that was part of it, part of it. Cause, but one of the things that I'm seeing, I'm constantly trying to figure out a pathway, like you have on the South Side to clean the business district. So we're trying to figure that out so that everyone's on board where we would do that on the North Side. Um, that's probably beyond this, but so similarly to the, like to ticketing, like how would you differentiate between someone that's, um, you know, there's not a 311 calls coming in in certain areas. And, you know, is the inspector literally just going to be going up and down the street trying to find problems?
I did.
And then would this, would that, uh, with, be able to be, uh, like, uh, stay in the test of time on court if like someone shows up and go, well, they just picked me, like whether there's a problem down the street, they didn't identify that. That happens all the time with PLI.
Well, yeah, I mean, I, I've, uh, sort of given my marching orders to our inspectors that, uh, you have to, there has to be equity. And if you're responding to a 311 call and this property's trashed, if you look right there and it's trashed, you better write it. Um, so I've sort of enprached that as a, as a model to, to do. Um, again, more inspectors in the wards, you know, I, I would drive by and see stuff and just pull over and write it. Um, you know, you have, you're afforded that opportunity, uh, with more inspectors. Um, I think this could absolutely happen, you know, this happens at the parcel level. Um.
There's probably a better connection that we made between the inspect, the citations that you're giving or if you're, someone's driving on the street with like the land bank to say, hey, here are the properties that are most being cited for trash on the property. Like maybe they're not even, I don't know. I'm wondering about the system, like is the system actually like communicating to another part of the city that could solve vacant abandoned property issues? Like, cause we all know that that probably is going to be the biggest accomplishment that we can do is like, if we're having trouble contacting the owner, you know, like you described in like the, the court system, you know, there could be opportunities there that we don't, we don't realize that if we made better connections. I'm just thinking like, you know, with the ticketing that's being proposed here, you know, how we're gonna help, everyone's going to talk to each other. No one has to answer that. I'm just like thinking about that out loud.
Councilman, if I may, I know that Councilperson Strasburger is.
Yeah, that's fine.
Uh, trying to get a couple of questions in here. Is it okay?
Yeah, I'm, I could talk all day. I could talk for 10 minutes. I'm good.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilperson Strasburger, I know you're about to jump into a meeting there.
Thanks so much, Council, Councilperson Charlotte. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Thank you all for being here, for the work that you do every day. I just, I can't say enough of good things about all of you and the hard work that you do, particularly on this topic. And I'm proud to be a co-sponsor of this piece of legislation. Along the lines of, or in a similar vein to Councilperson Warwick's questions, I wanted to make sure that in addition to proactive inspections and enforcement, that there is a complimentary plan, I guess in response to some of the concerns we heard from community organizations, particularly representing groups of people who might be new to Pittsburgh, might not be native or might not be, you know, English speakers as their first language, might not have had a very long to interact with the city of Pittsburgh and offer the most welcome experience possible for, for any number of people, what we can do to full star level, like educating people in addition to enforcing, because I think it probably takes both. But what can we do? What are some of your ideas as to what can be done in a complimentary way to, to this legislation enforcement piece to like really get out there, make sure we're just like in a, in the most friendly way possible, I think akin to what, you know, to be as stupid in the plastic bag and educating business owners in sort of a friendly way before penalizing them to.
Councilperson, I think we lost you.
Picture's frozen.
No. Does anyone want to, you know, we've talked a little bit about the making sure people are aware on the, at least there's anyone want to speak to that?
I can say that we're working with Michelle King and the Office of Refugee and Immigrant Affairs to translate some of our services into separate languages and to offer that translation to folks who need it. So more to come on that. We, we'll be getting certified in Public Works on those translation services.
See if she, I was hoping she might be able to jump back in here. She's off now? All right. If she's able to get back on, we'll give her back the floor. I, I did want to ask this other question. This is a modern world. Looks like she's back on. Councilperson, the floor is yours if you. She's on again. Nothing. See if, seeing if she can come back on.
Hi, can y'all hear me now?
Yes, yes.
Sorry, I threw it off for a minute. I don't know where I got cut off, but I was really just talking about education, complimenting the work that this is, that this is doing, that this enforcement will do. So how do we get out to the communities popularly that need to hear, you know, about the rules and regulations the most that can go hand in hand with this enforcement? So it's, yeah, so both are happening at the same time. Are there plans to have an even greater sort of area of the city covered through friendly education efforts?
Yes, I think, you know, we have our annual newsletter and calendar. You know, we're also looking at doing more campaign targeted communications to the residents to just kind of let them know, let the public know that, you know, these things are company. I think also, you know, taking lessons learned from past changes to enforcement actions where, you know, we have a, a long lead time to give folks a chance to, you know, not necessarily ticket, but like let them be aware of the upcoming changes in enforcement. So they themselves can, you know, proactively work with us to correct their situation.
Okay, that's great. I mean, I'd love to see, you know, to the extent possible that there are new inspectors or someone else in the bureau being able to, you know, periodically attend community organizations, you know, working with the council member, working with the community affairs office, et cetera, you know, just to really get out there and make sure that there's, as this starts to, you know, fully passes and as it starts to be enforced, that, that we can really link at the city as well.
And I think certainly, you know, partnering with our internal organizations as well, less than 311, you know, this will be a change of business practice for them as well. So I think we have to be mindful of that as we go through our process of change, that there's sometimes unanticipated outcomes that we just need to be flexible to adapt to. But certainly, you know, we do have some additional coordinator positions that can handle some of that community outreach with organizations and impacted councilpersons.
Thank you. And then finally, is there a reason why, I mean, I understand that this is meant to cut down on the number of days that, you know, you have to take a violation through to get some sort of cleanup. I've also felt the extreme frustration of seeing in after like three months or even one month, even 30 days of a trash violation out, the violation abated the day before the court date. Is, and I don't, I certainly don't want to spend our, our inspectors' time, pressures' time when they could be out educating and enforcing on this, on this matter, on spending court. Is there any reason why we couldn't figure out a way, any number of ways to say embed a, someone from the law department in environmental services or DPW to do all of that court work, to be able to like integrate all of the photos, violations, information, and be able to have them appear in court? Not in addition to, but instead of the inspectors? So that's their sole job and the inspectors are free to continue to be out in the field?
I, I know, I think there's a little danger there with who took this picture. And what I mean by that is, you know, again, we were purely following a PLI and domies lead where an inspector goes out, it's their case, they photograph it, they document, I was here on this day, I saw this. Kind of all that goes away. Is the only, the only thing that I could say about it, if that's not a big deal, I mean, it's something we could certainly think about.
I can speak like historically, you know, prior to bringing the anti litter inspectors into the Department of Public Works, that is, you know, we did have a law liaison that assisted us with that. And our, our record of success in Magisterial Court was much lower than it is even currently. We hardly had any success at all. So we have tried that in the past. I'm not saying that there's not space for that, looking towards that, that kind of improvement as we become a little bit more nimble, certainly open, always open to new ideas. But we have tried those types of arrangements in the past that just, I think for, for reasons that Eric mentioned, you know, there's a, a disconnect, I think also, you know, the magisterial courts operate at different days. You know, it became a real scheduling challenge for the law person assigned to those tasks to assist us, to just even attend.
A lot of that, a lot, a lot of that long lead time does come from the magisterial courts as well. So, you know, we issued a criminal complaint, it gets sent to the magistrate, it could take them a month. I've seen three months to schedule. So, I mean, it's, it's a burdensome process right now.
Okay. I appreciate that. I'm sorry that I have to hop off, but I appreciate again all of the work you're doing and you being here today. Thanks, Councilperson Charlotte, for chairing this really important topic.
I also certainly want to thank Councilperson Strasburger for being a co-sponsor of this legislation and really for providing staff time as well as we work through some, some problems here. I think the only other question I have kind of for Public Works leadership here, do we, do we have any concerns about being able to implement quality of life ticketing? Or what are our concerns? I knew that the big one was the, the anti litter inspectors having the, the bodies to do it. And I think we're on the right track there. What other concerns are still outlying?
I mean, certainly there are parts of the process that we need to iron out. I think that's where we, you know, we're going to need what I would call like a ramp up period or a warming period to, you know, actual implementation of the enforcement. I think we have, you know, outstanding questions about technology to use, like how will we, you know, the, the very physical process of like, how are we issuing this ticket to an individual? You know, I think there's some manners at which we're going to have to partner with folks to identify the appeals process. And I think also post, post implementation, I'm probably most curious about is, you know, you know, hopefully seeing an impact, you know, both visibly in our neighborhoods or cleaner neighborhoods, but also where that might lead us in terms of, you know, other areas of blight or, you know, environmental concern, where we can be effective in helping our communities be cleaner and healthier. John, Eric?
I could all our thought.
Yeah, mine was just more of the, what are these handhelds? How many manufacturers are there? This is at the RFP? How are we going to pay for it? Just, you know, those are all sort of my knee jerk is operationalizing this stuff and getting these to communicate with Computronics if we go that route. There's just, there's a, you know, for me, there's a lot, lot to think through, but.
I think one of the things that.
But I like it.
That we talked about that I think is going to be most important is doing that ramp up period. Sorry. But doing that ramp up period of fake tickets. Oh, gosh, sorry. Of fake tickets for a while to try to move forward and, and learn from that time period there in the same way that we've done for additional parking regulations or things like that. Sorry.
Yeah, a lot of people are very unaware of our refuse city code. And, and we get that on the front end a lot, that people have no idea that you can't have a can over 35 gallons. You know, there's a lot of stuff. They, they didn't know that they were doing something wrong. So, you know, these are our neighbors too. So we have to approach it with kid gloves, I think. And again, I thought with talking to your office, that maybe there would be some sort of media exposure or letting, you know, talk, like, open the discussion about this program coming. And I do like the sort of lead time of faux tickets.
Yeah. We've done that with, when we implemented the parking enhancement district in the South Side, there were a couple of months where we were giving tickets that we weren't actually giving, that didn't actually have a fine associated them, just the, we called them like oops tickets or something like that. But it also helped, you know, train enforcement agents how to, how to get through the process and with, without firing with live ammo, you know. So that I think that, I think that will help us work through some of the problems here. Councilman, do you have anything else?
No, I'm just happy to, you know, be here, listen to, you know, some of the concerns that you're bringing up. Or I'm sorry, the potential concerns, you know.
All right. Well, I think anything from, else from Public Works here? Just want to thank you again for working through this process with us and all the work that you do on, on a daily basis. You, you may not know that you live in the city of Pittsburgh or, you know, for any other purposes besides the fact that we pick up your trash every day or every week. And, you know, I think that's, we talk about everyone who comes through Pittsburgh, having a day to day touch and a week to week touch, that's, that comes from environmental services. And just really want to thank you for all the, the work that you do. It's a lot. So appreciate that. So having exhausted the business of this post agenda, this meeting is adjourned.